I would like to call this regular meeting of the Zion City Council order. Clerk please call the roll.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Commissioner Dutton?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Commissioner McKinney?
Here.
Mayor Hill?
Here. I'd like to ask Pastor James Wycher to step forward and share a few words with us. Let's pray. Lord God, we thank you for this day, this opportunity to gather together once again. We thank you for what you have given us in our city. We thank you for those who lead, those who serve, those who sacrifice in so many ways. We thank you for the opportunity to gather and conduct our business. We just pray for your grace, your wisdom, your guidance. We acknowledge that governments are from you and they're ordained by you, Lord, and we pray that each of us would reckon with what that means to us. And we just pray for that kind of wisdom here tonight. We pray for attitudes that are right, decisions that are good, and all things would bring glory and honor to the King of kings and the Lord of lords. We give you ourselves here tonight, and we thank you, and we pray in your name. Amen. Thank you. Do you all rise, and pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Item four, are there any agenda changes?
Mr. Mayor, yes, 11E, could we delete that?
And on the item number seven, approval of minutes, and it's of the regular meeting held on May 7th rather than May 5th.
No, it's been moved.
Okay, it's 8A, I'm sorry.
Closed session.
Closed session is May 7th. Is there a motion? Are there agenda changes?
So moved.
You have a motion and a second?
Second.
Clerk please call the roll.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Dutton?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number five is a special presentation. It's the administration of oath of firefighter paramedic, Sariel Soto.
Hi, Sariel Soto.
Have been appointed to the office of firefighter paramedic.
Have been appointed to the office of firefighter paramedic.
In the city of Zion, in the county of Lake.
In the city of Zion, the county of Lake.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So I'll be done.
So I'll be done.
This has kind of become a tradition over the last several years, when we get a new hire, we get a promotion. We like to do it in front of the public, in front of the council, just to recognize what's going on. So many people ask what's it take to be a firefighter paramedic. It's not just a fill out an application, you get a job. It's a competitive process set by state act, whether you want to be a firefighter, whether you want to be a police officer. There is a process that you go through, through the board of police and fire commission in a municipality whereby you take a written exam, there's a physical assessment test called a CPAT that you have to pass, oral exam, and then you get placed on a list based on your ranking. Two years ago, say, you took the test, you ranked 24, or actually, four years ago. Two years ago, or actually, this year, would be right, at the end of last year, she ranked number one. And this is one of those cases where I think I'm fair in saying she's really achieved her dream job.
Do you want to do this together?
When Sariel was in high school, she went to the Lake County High School tech campus
If that's okay.
Yes, that's fine. We have Ms. Chantel Taylor, Ms. Janet Jones, and Ms. Donna Lindner.
and participated in the emergency medical technician program through the tech campus, and because of her scores, she was allowed to ride time with an area department. Being from Zion, she chose to ride with the Zion Fire Department. So this is when she was 18 years old, 17, somewhere around there.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
She rode with us, and she really fell in love with the department and said, "This
I'm Chantel Taylor, President of the Illinois Beach Sunrise Rotary Club, and we're here
is what I want to do." And if I do my math right, six years later, she's standing here now, and she got the job
tonight to share a special program that we're going to be offering in the community to help with hunger needs in the Zion community.
she'd always dreamed of. So, I would like to ask her father to come up, and he can go ahead and pin her badge
Mayor, is it okay to share with your brochure?
It is.
I've already shared it with the council.
Please.
on her.
Okay, and I apologize to commissioners, who will be hearing this for the second
Sariel also holds the distinction of being the first full-time female firefighter in
time, but we do have some new people in the audience. Illinois Beach Sunrise Rotary has adopted a program. It's a grassroots effort originated out in California. It's really a very simple gesture, and the basis of the program is every time you go to the grocery store, you buy a can or two cans of non-perishable items, you put it
the history of the Zion Fire Department.
into this green bag, and then volunteers from Illinois Sun Beach Rotary will come and pick it up every other month, and then they'll give you a new green bag, and you continue the process. The beauty of the program is for those people who really would like to help their neighbors who are facing hunger, it may be hard to write a check for $100, but to put a couple cans of non-perishable items in this bag will be of great help. The recipients of these canned goods will only be Zion food pantries. So Pastor Fielding's Church Love Abiding Food Pantry, which is, I was amazed when I went to it, it is so huge, and the lady Connie is just absolutely wonderful who runs it. And they're servicing at lunchtime up to like 1,000 people, and it's just incredible to me, and they were thrilled to hear about canned goods. Also, our Lady of Humility on Wadsworth Road, part of the Zion area, and then also Christian Faith Fellowship on 27th Street. Right, we just, we haven't connected totally with them, Donna has, but those three food pantries will be the beneficiaries of all of our canned goods. So we want to make the council aware of it. We would like your support. We would like to be able to have permission to put these into your brochure rack. We would encourage all of you to spread the program. We need volunteers. There's a website, there's a phone number, everything is explanatory, and we encourage you to give us as much support as possible. Donna?
I think Janet has summed it up very well. As I shared earlier, prior to coming to the meeting tonight, I did see on the news, perhaps some of you also saw the story about the veteran who dialed 911 after getting out of the hospital. He was a diabetic, and he came home to an empty refrigerator. And certainly, this is something that all of the community can share in. On the back, it says, "We can make it easier for individuals to share food, just go to the grocery store, pick up an extra item or two, phone our number, or go to our website, and someone will come and pick up your green bag."
Thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Ken Fielding from Zion.
I didn't realize that you guys would be taking care of part of my concerns here already tonight, but I just would like to express, I am Ken Fielding, I do live on Bethel Boulevard, also the pastor at Christian Assembly. I'm not a stranger to city council meetings, and I encourage my people at the church to attend as well, to be engaged with what's happening here in the city. But after the May 5th meeting, I got to admit, I was a bit angered and embarrassed by the total lack of respect demonstrated in that council meeting. While former Mayor Elaine Harrison was trying to gracefully leave office and greet and address the community, there was some who heckled and mocked Mr. Harrison. It was a demonstration of great disrespect, and all these rude comments in front of Mr. Harrison's wife, his children, and his grandchildren was totally uncalled for. When Mr. McKinney was appointed and sworn in that night, again, the heckling continued. Frankly, I think Mr. McKinney is a great choice for this position. New eyes, a new insight, a wealth of experience, very well-educated, and an African-American to add diversity to this council. And again, the disrespect that was shown from Mr. McKinney was totally out of line. This was not an exercise of a First Amendment right. It was a shameless display of hubris. I hope in the future that the city council will not tolerate such behavior. Those who attend these meetings certainly have a right to hear what is being said by the council without such outbursts. We have a right to see what's going on without signs obscuring our view, not to mention those that are watching by cable access. People have the right to express their views during the citizens' comment, during that portion of the meeting, but do not have the right to interrupt and distract others that are trying to be informed. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I would like to see some boundaries set and enforcement with it, rules for these meetings. Signs need to be limited only to the citizen comment section. Disruptive comments during consideration should be grounds for removal from this meeting. And just a side note, I'm also of the opinion that only citizens of Zion should be able to address this council. Thank you for your listening, and I see you already have something in the works, but God bless you.
Thank you. Can I just have a comment? Thank you very much. You know, when I was seated in the audience, I could hear that same thing, so I appreciate what you said. But then when I came up to the bench here, I didn't notice anything, and I'm just wondering, Mr. Mayor, if there's a way that we could allow citizens to let us know if there's a disruption, if we can't hear it, that might be helpful.
I would just respond that the same concerns have been expressed to me, and we have asked our legal counsel to put together some guidelines on what we can and cannot do. There is an Open Meetings Act, and we have to be sure and follow that, and we don't want to violate the Open Meetings Act, so our legal counsel is looking at that, and they'll put together some guidelines for us.
Yes.
Thank you for your concerns and your guidance.
Thank you. Mr. Bob Stapleton from Joliet.
Good evening, Mr. Counsel. My name's Bob Stapleton. I want to address the council regarding item 11A on the agenda concerning the cell tower.
Okay, you'll be given an opportunity to speak at that time. Janet Jones from Zion.
Good evening, thank you. Wearing a little different hat, my only comment is, and I would just like to know if there's some update, I know that, Mayor Hill, you have been trying to work in the past with the other taxing bodies to be able to get together to kind of work with the school districts. People come in and they're very upset about taxes, but they don't always understand who the taxing bodies are, what they're receiving, and their percentages, if they're not looking at their tax bills, or if they're renting and maybe don't see a tax bill. I think it's imperative, and I would ask the council to please consider getting together with the other taxing bodies to see if we can get the taxes lowered in Zion, if we can get the EAV to be adjusted. Many of us are facing situations with our homes that are half the value they were before. And within our school system, you know, we do have some of our issues. They're doing a great job, but by the same token, money has to be accounted for. And with this year, with, you know, I haven't seen everything, but everything that I have been hearing, it's only going to go up again, and values will go down again. So I think it's imperative, whether it's the council that does it, an ad hoc committee appointed by the mayor, whatever it is, I think the taxing bodies need to get together and be able to work this out. Thank you very much.
Janet, I just want to say something, because Mayor Hill was instrumental in bringing a group just like that together. Prior to the election period, all representative, there were representatives from all taxing bodies that met together for a period of months, and I'd like to see that start up again.
Was there any resolution to the meeting?
Community of Character came out of that meeting.
Pardon me?
The Community of Character Initiative came out of that meeting.
But not about the taxes, though.
We're still working on that.
Yeah, okay, no, and I just am curious to where it was. I know that Mayor Hill, it was one of his big items that he wanted to accomplish, and I applauded him for it as we spoke about it. I just think it's at a critical mass point, looking at what I see in the downfall of the budgets, and how much we're going to be short, and the choices that this council is going to have to make for this city and for its citizens. It's going to be very tough, and we need to find out where we can control things and how we can control them as a community, and still keep the education of our children at the highest level, and make our schools accountable and our government accountable for what's there. But that's only going to be working together. So I applaud what you did, and I hope it continues. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Ashley Blazer from Chicago.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of comments that I'd like to make. I am speaking for myself and as mayor of the community. I did not run this by any other members of the city council. But I want to say that I am, that our community has experienced a tragedy, and we've been involved with this for the past few weeks. And it's a true tragedy for everybody concerned. No one wins in something like this. It's a tragedy for Justin Howell and his family and his friends, and many other people in the Zion community. It's a tragedy as well for the police officer involved, as well as his family, friends, and other members of our community. I want to express my appreciation to Commissioner McDowell and the Ministerial Association for facilitating open communication throughout the community throughout this process. I want to express my appreciation to all those who protested for keeping their actions peaceful. I certainly don't agree with much of what's been said, but I will defend your right to say it. I want to express my appreciation to Chief Dumian and the entire Zion Police Department for performing their duties while under a great deal of stress these past few weeks. I am hopeful for the future of our Zion community. I am hopeful that some good will come out of this tragedy. We've seen communications between people who have never communicated before. We must continue to talk to each other and not at each other. We must make every person in our community feel like they are seen and heard. That is my goal for the coming years, to help everyone feel a part of our community. If we can accomplish that, some good will emerge from this tragedy. And that's it.
Thank you.
Number seven is approval of minutes of the regular meeting held May 5th, 2015, at 7:01 PM. Approval but not release of closed session minutes for a meeting held on May 5th, 2015, at 7:20 PM. Is there a motion? A motion in a second? Clerk please call the roll.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Dutton?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number eight is a consent agenda. Clerk please read the consent agenda.
Approval of minutes of a special meeting held May 7th, 2015, at 7:31 PM. Approval but not release of closed session minutes of a meeting held on May 7th, 2015, at 8:42 PM. Bills, vouchers 1-2-0-8-7-5 through 1-2-0-8-8-5 drawn on First Merit Bank, total $394,895.38, and a proclamation for Memorial Day, Day 25th, 2015.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Motion in the second. Clerk please call the roll.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Dutton?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number 9A is a resolution commendation, 20 years service for Thomas Bailey.
Good to see you. Thomas, we have a resolution that has like three, 20 years of service. So this is a resolution of commendation, whereas Thomas K. Bailey has completed 20 years of dedicated and loyal service to the city of Zion, and whereas said Thomas K. Bailey has not only won great admiration for his service to the fire rescue department from city officials and fellow employees, but from Zion residents whom he serves willingly and enthusiastically, and whereas it is the desire of the city council on behalf of the citizens of this community to express sincere and profound appreciation to Thomas K. Bailey for giving generously of his time and efforts. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Zion extends to Thomas K. Bailey his humble expression of esteem for serving faithfully and well, and extends its best wishes for continued employment, good health, success, and prosperity for many others to come, signed by the mayor and all members of the city council. Congratulations.
Al, you want to be in the shot too, or?
No, go ahead.
Is there a motion to pass a resolution?
So moved.
Motion in the second. Clerk please call the roll.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Dutton?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 9B is maintenance of streets and highways by municipalities under the Illinois Highway Code regarding MFT funds for signal maintenance. Director?
Thank you. In your packet is a maintenance resolution we are required to file with IDOT for our estimated cost for routine maintenance items using motor field tax funds. Estimated cost of $45,000 is for traffic signal maintenance, which already has been budgeted for in the motor field tax account. Staff is requesting approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion? So moved. A motion? Second?
Yep.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Dutton?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 9C is maintenance of streets and highways by municipality under Illinois Highway Code regarding MFT funds for signal maintenance. Director?
Thank you. In your packet is a maintenance resolution we are required to file with IDOT for our estimated cost for routine maintenance items using motor field tax funds. Estimated cost of $45,000 is for traffic signal maintenance, which already has been budgeted for in the motor field tax account. Staff is requesting approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion? So moved. A motion? Second?
Yep.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Dutton?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 9C is maintenance of streets and highways by municipality under Illinois Highway Code regarding road saw. Director?
Thank you again. In your packet, you also find an IDOT resolution for maintenance of streets and highways by municipality. This resolution must be passed by the city council to utilize motor field tax funds for the purchase of road saws for the next winter. Staff therefore requests and recommends passing of the resolution.
Is there a motion?
Move.
Second.
Approve.
Motion in the second. Clerk please call the roll.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Dutton?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 10A is authorizing execution of amended contract purchase agreement, 3077 Sheridan Road, for Director Nabel. Director Nabel is not here. I'll read this if it pleases the council. There's a, attached is an amended real estate contract for 3077 Sheridan Road. This is for the public, this is the Old Rooks Restaurant. At a prior council meeting, the purchase of this property was approved for $312,000 contingent on various items, one of which included passing of an economic incentive agreement for $45,000 for repairs and renovation on the property. The intent is to then sell the property to NNT's restaurants to relocate to the site. After performing various inspections of the property, it was found that the $45,000 would not be sufficient to address the necessary repairs. We then approached the owner and renegotiated purchase price down to $290,500 to allow the incentive agreement for repairs and renovations to be increased to $66,500. The owner agreed, and TIF approved the changes to both agreements, as a total amount invested would remain the same. The revised agreement reflects the change in purchase price. The agreement also removes the environmental protections of the city that was in the original contract. As a result, we are in the process of obtaining a Phase 1 environmental study to identify any potential risks prior to closing. We have the option to get out of the contract if the environmental report comes back negatively, or if we do not pass the economic incentive agreement at a meeting to be held in the near future. Based on this, staff recommends approval of the agreement as presented. Is there a motion?
Second.
Second?
I have some comments or questions.
Further discussion?
Yeah. So this letter says that it's the intent to sell it to NNT's restaurant. Do we know if NNT's intends to buy it?
Yes, and the agreement in, on, you go to the real estate contract agreement on page two, 4 dash, it's the, not the, not the ordinance, but the real estate agreement. It's back a little bit further. These are conditions that have to be met. And item 4-4 is purchaser, which would be us, has authorized, approved, and executed a purchase agreement with NNT's Family Restaurant, Inc., for the subsequent conveyance of the subject property to NNT's Family Restaurant for purchase. In other words, we will, it will be a simultaneous closing. We will purchase the property from the gentleman who owns it now, and at the same time, they will purchase the property from us.
Do we know what's going to happen to this space at the Shiloh Mall? It's going to be vacated by NNT's?
We don't know that.
I just have one more question. Why is it beneficial for the city to buy this property and then immediately sell it rather
Four dash...it's the...not the ordinance, but the real estate agreement. It's back a little bit further. These are conditions that have to be met. And item four dash four is purchaser, which would be us, has authorized to prove and execute a purchase agreement with NNT's Family Restaurant Inc. for the subsequent conveyance of the subject property to NNT's Family Restaurant for purchase. In other words, we will...it will be a simultaneous closing. We will purchase the property from the gentleman who owns it now and at the same time they will purchase the property from us.
Do we know what's going to happen to this space at the Shiloh Mall? It's going to be vacated by NNT's?
We don't know that.
I just have one more question. Why is it beneficial for the city to buy this property and then immediately sell it rather than just NNT's buying the property?
NNT's...it's my understanding that this is the easiest way for it to happen, otherwise it would not happen. We'll hold the mortgage on it.
I know this has already been approved, so it's really just amending it slightly?
Yes, it's amending the...it amends the purchase price down and it increases the incentive agreement up so that it's equal to the 300 and...I believe it was $312,000 that was on the original. $312,000 was the original price. Is there any further discussion? Clerk please call the roll.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
I'm not really in favor of the city purchasing property like this, but since this was already passed by the previous city council, I'm going to vote in favor of it. Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
And I also would just like to make a comment that I'm not in favor of the city being a landlord, but right now we're not getting much economic development anywhere. And a decision that was made a while back is that we have to become more aggressive in some of our economic development strategies and this happens to be one of them. So I'm also going to vote aye.
Item 10B is to accept a deed in lieu of foreclosure for certain real property commonly known as 1529 33rd Street, Zion, Illinois for Director Ianson.
Thank you, Your Honor Commissioners. 1529 33rd Street is one of the properties slated for demolition through the grant program. In April of 2014, the property owners, PA7 LLC, were found liable for building violation, taking property registration, and property maintenance violations through the adjudication process. In lieu of the city proceeding the adjudication, judgment, and past liens, the property owners have agreed the deed to property to the city. Staff is recommending the city council consider accepting the deed in lieu of foreclosure.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. A motion in a second. Is there further discussion?
I'm assuming it's an advantage to the city not to try to adjudicate this matter and seek the funds that are...do the city because of the liens on this property. Is that the reason why we would accept a title instead of seeking the renumeration and the funds owed to the city because of the liens?
We have two matters pending currently against this property. One was converting the administrative adjudication findings to a judgment. We've been not able to actually properly serve them because the property owner is down in South Carolina and we've been following the deed that keeps bouncing along and keep transferring the property. Along that same path, this is one of the properties that was earmarked for a fast track demolition. Once we were able to make contact with the property owner's representative, when they saw all of these things pending, they just opted to deed it over to the city. So in lieu of that, we did not have to do the fast track demo. So the city saved some funds in that aspect because we ceased all legal procedures on that. And once the city gets it, we'll work with the county to abate the back taxes and then the city can just go ahead, demo it, and then try to sell the property. So it is somewhat advantageous. It cuts back on some of the legal fees and the profits.
I think part of our problem with so many abandoned houses also is trying to find out who actually owns the property and is responsible for it. And it becomes very, very difficult. We've had...someone raised an issue on a property on...I think it was...
2003 Gideon?
Gideon. And we've been pursuing this for probably five years, trying to get the property owner to do something and now find out who the property owner is. Right now it's going up for taxes in Lake County. So...and then the issue then is if we take it when we...out of a tax sale or they give it to us, it's $35,000 to tear the house down. And you know, is that our responsibility and where do we get that money to tear somebody's house down that they've neglected for years and years? We get the lot, but you'll probably sell the lot for $2,000 or $3,000. So it's just a...it's a mess.
A motion in a second? Is there further discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Item 11A is to consider zoning dock at 15Z1 requesting a special use permit to erect a cell tower located at 2211 Hebron Avenue for Director Ianson. Planning and zoning commission recommends denial.
Thank you, Your Honor Commissioners. National Wireless Ventures, LOC, has requested a special use permit to erect a cell tower located at 2211 Hebron Avenue Park District Maintenance Building there on Hebron. Though of all height of the proposed structure would be 125 feet. This property is currently zoned highway businesses that are permitted use with issuance of a special use permit. Attached for review are the site plan, land lease agreement, FAA registration and study, and photo simulation. At the March 5th, 2015 planning and zoning meeting, the board recommended to deny this request.
I would just...before we get into discussion or motions, I just want to be sure that the council members understand that because this was a...the board...the zoning board recommended denial, that in order for this to be approved, it would take a super majority, so it would have to carry four votes. And is there a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we don't accept the recommendation of the building and zoning commission and we move to approve the special use permit. That's my motion. I have some comments to make, but we'll see if that is seconded.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
A motion in a second. Discussion.
I just read through the commentary of the meeting and Director Ianson, you were at that meeting, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I just need to find it now. So as I looked through this commentary, there were several questions that according to the commentary, Mr. Stapleton, who is present here tonight, was able to answer. A question was asked, what would happen after 25 years? Mr. Stapleton answered, the lease would either be renewed or the tower would be dismantled. It would...it was asked that if tower...if there were other towers built in residential areas. And Mr. Stapleton responded, yes. And I assume, Mr. Stapleton, maybe you could come up to the podium, please? You answered that there were towers in Hoffman Estate, Schaumburg, and Darien County. Are those towers that are operated by your company?
They're operated by the carriers. I'm past president of the State Wireless Association, the Illinois State Wireless Association. So for instance, we're talking about Park District here. In those cases, there are similar situations, having towers on Park District property in those areas. And they're operated by various carriers or tower companies.
An issue was raised about a code issue in reference to gravel driveway, which our city code requires it to be asphalted. And you said that that would be corrected.
That would be correct.
Okay. Another question was asked about the safety in regard to the Federal Aviation Association. Would this tower meet with their approval? And I understand according to your statement that it has been registered with the FAA.
That is correct. It will require no lights.
Question was asked about possible vandalism and would this monopole be dangerous to the public? You mentioned that copper might be an attractive item for theft. It was asked of Mr. Ianson if he thought it would be a hardship to the Zion Police Department to add this additional facility. And Mr. Ianson said no, but I wonder if our police chief has a comment about that?
I don't think it would be any digital burden for patrolling efforts. If we replace, we'd do it now, but there would be no guarantee that the property would not be destroyed or stuff.
The location is the maintenance facility of the Zion Park District. That's the location. It was also asked if the tower fails, who would be responsible? And you took responsibility for that.
That's correct. Insurance, insurance, and everything else. And most likely, I can say, going back to the tornadoes in Washington County last year, we knew exactly when the tornado hit because phone calls started going right into our office of emergency management down there and those calls were coming through cell phones that told us the towers were up. If we're going to have a failure, it's going to bend like a straw at about a fail point somewhere around 60 feet. But it would bend versus break and fall down because there's no guy wires. We're embedded in the concrete.
One of our residents attended that meeting and made the statement that he believed the tower would...he doesn't believe the tower would increase property values. And he thought that it would actually not lower the taxes for the Zion Park District. I see that the executive director of the Zion Park District is here. And would you make a comment about that, please, about whether or not this would affect the taxes of the Zion Park District?
The district actually has lowered its levy in this fiscal year. And this is an alternative revenue source that we have looked at so that we can lower the levy for this fiscal year. So we have an agreement that has been led by our attorneys and that we have a solid agreement here and an alternative revenue source so that they could offset some of the levy lowering that we did in our position.
It's my opinion that the questions...they were very good questions asked at the commission meeting, but in reading the commentary, I feel that you answered those questions effectively. And I think the question asked by one of our residents is also answered tonight by affecting the tax...taxes of the Zion Park District. So that's why I move in favor of approving this special use permit.
Excuse me, I don't mean to stick my nose into negotiations that have already taken place, but I was wondering, did you consider at all asking for $240,000 instead of $24,000 a year and seeing if they would upfront the money to you at $240,000? And then you could invest it or collect interest on it rather than their company collecting interest on it? Would you consider that?
I would have to bring that back to the management. That with this agreement...this agreement is basically 35 years in length. Will generate well over a million dollars to the Park District plus. We can ask that of our customer or client to see if they would do that in some form. It has been done with certain municipalities. It's just based on revenues and everything else. We're going to be investing probably close to $300,000 into the site prior to before receiving our first rent on the tower.
Is this a done...is this a signed contract between you and the...
Yes, it is. It's been executed. So would you be interested in that? I guess I'm looking to the back. Would you be interested in getting $240,000 rather than $24,000 a year?
Sure.
So what do we do? I guess that's my question. If we approve that, do they get $24,000 a year? Or so if we would not approve it and say, if you can come back with a better deal for the Park District, then we would approve it at a later date? I'm putting you on the spot. Right, you're putting me on the spot and it's an answer I can't give you tonight. I will say that. It's an agreement that's been agreed on by both and signed by...executed by both parties. So you know, I don't...I'm not an attorney, so I don't want to...it's not my job to open up the agreement, but you know, all I can do is ask. But the thing is, it's still the...you know, it's an agreement between ORVAT and the Park District and I'm not a party to the agreement. My job here is to talk about why it should be there.
This is only the second half of my second meeting, so I need to ask our attorney something.
Is it contingent in here that the lease agreement is contingent on the special use?
Yes, it is. It's...okay, it's contingent upon passage of all government regulations.
I assume so because it's pretty significant. The only issue before the council is the approval of the special use.
Okay. Never mind.
As I said, with this first year, the agreement pays $24,000. It increases 3% per year over the term of the...as I say, it will generate to the Park District in excess of a million dollars over the term of the agreement. And that, you know, it's just as the director said, it's enabling them to do other things and they're not going to the taxpayers to generate additional revenue. And the only other thing, but based on your comments, the zoning board, for the most part, and Rich, I think you can say yes or no to this, but the findings of fact that were held that night, they all agreed in a positive way on the findings of fact on this site, so.
It was all unanimous except for one point. The proposed change will be detrimental to the public welfare or interest to other property or improvements in the neighborhood which the property is located. And that was a divided decision. Everything else was unanimous except for the final decision not to approve. So my motion still stands.
Would you read the motion?
Can you move to not accept the recommendation of planning and zoning commission and move to approve the special use permit for the tower?
So a vote of yes would allow the tower to be in place, a vote of no would deny the tower being in place, the special use permit. Well, I would hope that you would go back and talk to the Park District.
If you will.
Is there further discussion?
How does this...has it been determined how this affects the levy in the...the levy in the future? Yeah, in terms of it going down or...
Well, I think it's an alternative revenue source that we have now put into place for the 25 years of the term of the lease. So yes, I think it does add in fact to the future and the levy that the Park District has.
And if I heard correctly, you said that this does increase 3% per year?
Yes, 3% per year.
And additional carriers on this tower would also increase revenue? Although that's...
Yes, yes. That's true. So if an additional carrier comes onboard, additional revenue then is generated by the Park District.
I guess I also feel that everybody's concerned about their taxes. I'm not sure I really like the idea of 125-foot tower in the middle of a residential area. However, because people are so concerned about their taxes, I think this is a...I commend the Park District on looking for alternate revenue sources so that we can continue to offer programs even though your levy is going down. I commend that. So is there further discussion?
Motion.
Okay, the motion, if we vote yes, the tower...we overturn the zoning board's decision to deny. And if we vote no... And we have a motion in a second. We had that before we started talking. And if we vote no, then the special use permit is not awarded. If we vote yes, it is awarded.
Motion to approve the special use permit is what is on the floor.
Yes. Yes.
Clerk call the roll.
Commissioner Taylor?
I'm not sure of the motion.
The motion that I made, if it's a aye, then we're going to grant the special use permit. If it's nay, then we're not going to grant the special use permit.
Put it to... Prefer.
I prefer. I'm going to vote in just a minute. All of my comments have been in favor of approval.
Approve.
Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Thank you very much. Thank you. Yep. Yes, sir.
Oh, yes, I was saying yes. Item 11B is considered zoning dock at 15Z3, requesting a text amendment adding Section 70-128 to the Zion Municipal Code to allow electrical digital signs in all zoning districts with the approval of a special use permit other than residential per Director Ianson. And the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval. And we are also looking for approval of the ordinance dealing with that matter.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff is recommending a text amendment to Section 70-128 of the Zion Municipal Code to allow electronic digital signs in all zoning districts with the approval of the special use permit other than residential districts. This amendment will also regulate the operational limitation, display time, message chain sequence, and automatic dimming controls. At the May 7, 2015 Planning and Zoning Meeting, the board recommended approval.
Is there a motion?
I move for approval.
Right. Have a motion in a second. Further discussion? Now, this will be approving the ordinance also. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Item 11C, consider zoning dock at 15Z4, requesting a special use permit to install a 15-by-78-inch LED message board above the entrance to the east side of the building located at 1303 27th Street for Director Ianson. Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval contingent upon text amendment approval. And this is also to adopt the ordinance.
Thank you, Your Honor. You just read my memo, but the fire and rescue department located at 1303 27th Street is requesting a special use permit to install 15-inch by 78-inch LED message board above the entrance on the east side of the building. At the May 7, 2015 Planning and Zoning Meeting, the board recommended approval of the petitioner's request contingent upon the city's council passing the text amendment and meeting the criteria of Dock at 15Z3.
Is there a motion?
I move we approve. Second.
The motion is second. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Item 11D, consider request by Grace Missionary Church to waive permit fees for repaving of the parking lot per Director Ianson.
Thank you, Mayor. Grace Missionary Church is in the process of repaving the parking lot with a project cost of $44,000. They're requesting for the city council to consider waiving permit fees of $880.
Is that also your recommendation?
Yes, Mayor.
We move to approve. Motion in a second. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Item 11F is a tabulation of bids for demolition of four residential structures per Director Ianson.
Thank you, Mayor. Attached are the bids for the demolitions for the above addresses. These properties are part of the grant program where the city has reversed 50% of the demolition cost. These are addresses, 2802 Emes Avenue, 3107 Eschol, 2905 Elisha, and 2737 Enoch. Bids are Campanella &amp; Sons, Inc., $112,190; DK Contractors, Inc., $124,885; Lima Contractors, Inc., $125,000; C-Force Construction, Inc., $125,000. So, this price includes all four properties together. Staff is recommending the lowest responsible bidder, Campanella &amp; Sons, Inc., for the demolition cost of $112,190.
Is there a motion?
So...
We have a motion?
Second.
In a second. Discussion? I would just like to point out that the money for this is coming from a grant that the city received of $250,000, and the city matched $250,000. And we're using that money to tear down abandoned and dilapidated properties in a designated neighborhood that was outlined in the grant. And so, these are four of those properties. I believe we have taken one down already. And the other one that we talked about earlier today will be the sixth that we'll take down. So, further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Item 11G, this is consider approval of TIFF grant for It's All Good Coffee and Espresso per Director Nabel. Since Director Nabel is not here, I will read the memo that he put together for the Attached is a TIFF number-one grant request from It's All Good Coffee and Espresso, Inc., IAG. The city and TIFF recently approved a $111,000 grant and a $30,000 equipment loan to expand their business by paying for the construction of a drive-through at their existing property. During the course of the construction, some underground tanks were discovered. It's All Good made the decision to remediate their property and upon final payment to and completion of the project, the total cost was over $60,000. It's All Good then came before the TIFF board to request $66,815 reimbursement from TIFF to repay their loan taken out to cover the cost of the project. There was a significant amount of discussion among the members of the TIFF board, and the primary concerns are as follows. When the city sold the property to It's All Good years ago, the sale was done as-is per the contract, and all parties were aware of the prior uses of the property. Paying for the remediation due to the city selling the property also sets a dangerous precedent of opening the city up to liability for any property sold, which results in an environmental liability to the purchases. Additionally, it defeats the point of an as-is sale and results in less legal protection for the city as we do not abide by the agreement sign. It's All Good had a Phase II environmental study done, which did not reveal tanks. This study was sufficient for the bank for refinancing and to move forward with their project. Is there any responsibility of the company who did the study for this cost? Therefore, the TIFF board put a contingency on the approval of the request that It's All Good exhaust all efforts to pursue compensation from this company. What constitutes exhaustion of the efforts is detailed in an email from our attorney attached, and the results of their efforts are also included in the packet. The approval of these additional funds will not impact the completion of the drive-through project. The original intent goal of the original grant will still be completed as approved by the council and TIFF. Therefore, approval of additional funds will not result in additional jobs or tax increment, which may create a gray area as to TIFF eligibility of cost. However, the flip side of this, if the financial burden of the cleanup causes the business to fail, those jobs and revenue would be lost. TIFF awards have always been approved prior to a project commencing and have required quotes, et cetera, to ensure the funds are properly spent. TIFF was not awarded reimbursement of funds for the projects that were done and paid for prior to TIFF approval. This opens the door for a precedent that businesses in the TIFF district that have paid for improvements on their properties in the past can now come and request reimbursement for the work they have done. Please be aware that the approval of this agreement would require a waiver of Section 4 of the current agreement, which restricts It's All Good from coming back or subsequent incentives. Additionally, if approved by council, I would recommend that a provision be added to ensure that the funds go to pay off the debt incurred directly related to the project. Finally, TIFF put a provision at the clawback on this grant would be 10 years rather than five due to the significant investment paid into this property by TIFF. There are intangible benefits to the overall project and its success to the city of Zion. However, due to the concerns listed above and based on the return on investment to the city, I do not believe that it is advisable to approve this additional amount of funds. And that's from Director of Accounts and Finances, Dave Nabel. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the grant.
Have a motion?
Second.
In a second. Discussion?
I would -- I approve it on the basis that I recognize what the attorney has to say and what Director Nabel had to say. I also recognize that recently, we approved the TIFF grant for the corner of 27th and Sherwin to some people that are not outsiders. They're -- they are outsiders and not local people. And the return that we'll get from that property isn't near the return that we can get from a place like It's All Good. It's All Good is owned and operated by local people. They've invested a lot of their time and their energy and their money into the community. And if they happen to have to close their doors, what have we gained? I know that the attorney's recommendation is that he wouldn't -- he doesn't think it's a wise decision to make. However, that's his opinion. He's not the legislators. We're the legislators. We're the ones that make the decisions. So, I feel that without any disrespect to him at all or Director Nabel, I feel that on the basis of the economic times that we're in right now, and if we lose that place, it's another empty billing in our account, and I'd hate to see that. So, that's why I move for approval of the grant.
Some further discussion?
I feel the way that law does, and I think it's a shame that we sell anything on contract as-is to a particular Zion resident. And we got the... The... I don't...
You're talking about the environmental?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And I don't feel that we should have did that. And all the speculations, the group went through...
Right.
That all approved. No, I've said...
The company that did the Phase II environmental study, I don't know, Mr. Andros, if you want to answer some of these questions?
Absolutely.
Okay. The company that did the Phase II study, I understand they went out of business?
Unvoluntarily out of business. We all had...
Part of the recommendation of the attorney, not including what Commissioner Deteen said, is that exhausting the effort would perhaps take a few more steps than you've already done. And do you have a copy of that recommendation from the attorney?
You guys had -- I gave a... I went through three days of phone calls and emails.
Okay.
And you've got documents, I documented what I did. And then...
Is this that I...
That's what I did. But now, I was chasing after a business license and a insurance.
Yeah.
Well, that's nowhere to come. You can't get that. Then your lawyer recommended that we try it again. I forget what it was called, but that was something that my wife found. And we got there in a way. And that went to...
Can I interrupt you just a minute? There's a correspondence in it that is attorney-client privilege.
Okay.
I was just informed of that.
All right. Thank you.
So, your lawyer gave us something to go find. And it's what he called it. We found it right away.
Okay.
Okay. So, that was where... Then there's something else that my wife asked for, and it was mailed to us. And that was pretty much, we asked, what else do we need? Now, she thought that that had met the contingency. Dave Nabel told us that was good.
Yeah.
It was the last part that we provided.
Commissioner, I talked to Dave, and I asked him if, based on what has come forward, if they have exhausted all the steps that they could take...
Yeah.
Based on what our attorney had said. And he indicated to me that they had.
Okay. So, it met that requirement of exhausting the efforts.
Oh, yeah. You were exhausted.
Is there further discussion?
I knew it was great. You know, I was just waiting.
Yeah.
Is there further discussion? I guess I'd just like to make the comment that I think this follows up on what I said before, that we need to be aggressive in our economic development. And I think that what we do is we spend a lot of time trying to get new businesses to come to town. And I think we need to put, whenever we have the opportunity, we need to try and keep our present businesses in town. And I'm also in favor of doing it based on that, that we have to be aggressive. We can't sit back and not only for new businesses coming in, but for the present businesses. So, further discussion?
Well, I think there's no question of the value that It's All Good plays in our community. So, thank you for your business and what you do. It's just too bad this happened, I think.
Yeah.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Anybody? Announcements, June 2, 7:00 p.m., Zion City Council Meeting. June 13, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Trash to Treasure Lawn Sale, Shiloh Boulevard and Elisha Avenue to benefit the Zion Historical Society. June 16, 6:00 p.m., Zion Township Board Meeting. 7:00 p.m., Zion City... Is that 6 o'clock or 6:30? Is that 6 or 6:30? It's got to be 6. June 16, 6:30, Zion Township Board Meeting, and 7:00 p.m., Zion City Council Meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Have a motion? We have a motion?
He said that.
Second.
So, let's stay here longer.
Yeah.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.